Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 9th, 2018. Approve the council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, carried. invocation is...
Not here.
Not here. All right, we'll just have a moment of silence. Next is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All righty, we got a couple of resolutions. Resolution number 14954, resolution accepting donations from Walt and Lynn Clay. It's $500 to the Hutchinson Police Department for Law Enforcement Memorial Park Fund. We can do both of them, can't we?
Sure.
And the second one is resolution number 14957, resolution accepting donation from the Hutchinson Rotary Foundation, $5,000 to the Hutchinson Parks Department for Rotary Park Place Structure.
I'll make a motion to approve both of them.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to accept the donations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Citizens addressing the council. Anybody want to address the council? All righty, we have approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes of September 25th, 2018, and special workshop of September 25th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve them.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing parade permit to the Hutchinson High School on October 12th, 2018, for a homecoming parade. B is approval of resolution number 14959, resolution appointing additional election judges for general election. C is approval of resolution number 14953, resolution to sell surplus property at auction. D is approval of resolution number 14958, resolution declaring deferred assessment, assessment goals, SA 5067 and SA 5067A. E is consideration for approval of Tiger's After Dark Oktoberfest Celebration at Bobbing Barber Brewing Company on October 12th through the 14th, 2018. F is approval of the Spooky Sprint Event on October 27th, 2018. G is approval of out-of-state travel for miles several to attend the 2018 Mid-America Competitive Conference and Site Selector Forum in Chicago, Illinois from December 2nd through the 4th, 2018. Reappointment of Dave Scar to the Airport Commission on Septem- 2 September, 2021, and that was H. I is claims and appropriations and contract payments. Anything that some- anybody wants to hold off?
Got a question on E.
All righty.
I'll make a motion to approve the balance.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the balance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
E, you know, two questions actually. One, it talks about having the PD work on the- at the event, Matt.
Yep. Yeah, I'm speaking with Chief Ann Reliev. It sounds like they're going to be providing assistance. I don't think they're going to be the main type of security, but they're going to be there to provide assistance at the event.
And then second thing, and see, Mark's here, maybe he can answer it, and Jason, but just wondering about parking. When I looked at the map, it looks like the tent will kind of be in that northern part of that parking, the front parking lot, and that's actually the traffic flow around there. So is there no traffic that's going to be allowed in the front?
As far as I understand, Dan. Mark, could you please come forward? State your name, address. Jason, you probably-
Mark Sherman, 1020 Golf Course Road, Hutchinson. I was going to be here for moral support of Dan, but he's not here, so I'll-
I think he just came around.
I don't know.
He's right here.
There he is.
Sorry, I had to pick my daughter up from choir and then get her to, I call it hayah class.
Mark's got it under control.
All right, well, first, do I need to go through the normal stuff?
Yes, please, Dan.
Dan Hart, 255 North High Drive, Northwest 116 Hutchinson, 553 50. Good. Sorry, I'm late again, I apologize. All right.
My question was just, you know, looking at the map, the tent kind of would come out into that front parking lot on the north side, and since that's the true- through traffic-
Correct.
Is that all going to be blocked off?
The top part will be. The very front part will be designated for employee parking, so that way the employees, the staff, can be right there.
Okay.
And they won't be able to go around. It'll just be slotted for them to be able to come in. We'll have, I think we have 14 people slotted to work on Saturday alone throughout the day, so I need them to be able to get in and out fairly easy.
So that south part, though, the way the angle, south part of the front lot?
Correct.
That's where they're going to be parking?
Correct.
Okay, got it. So everybody, customers will all be in the back, then?
Customers will be in the back on the side, and we'll make sure that we have area for handicap right up close to the tent as well.
Okay. Well, I am.
So, Dan, you've already reached out to your neighbors and they know?
I have not reached out to them, no. I'm in the process of writing a letter and then sticking it on everybody's door handle. I mean, I can do that. It was a suggestion. It wasn't something that was told to me that I had to do by Haddon, but, I mean, I can do it.
Being a good neighbor goes-
Well, I think I have been a pretty good neighbor.
Yes, I know you have.
We've done a lot of renovations to the building, and we've tried to fix drainage issues and, you know, so, I mean, we can definitely go around and do that. I mean, we are zoned commercial, so, I mean-
Well, Dan, I would suggest that you do that and ask that you do that, because now you're adding outdoor music to it, and it's going past the 10 o'clock.
Correct. It's also underneath a tent, and it is facing in- facing towards our building, so-
Yeah, I understand.
You know, we can definitely reach out to them. I don't know exactly what, you know, we'll tell them, hey, you know, we're having this event. If you have an issue with that, you know, please let us know and we'll try to accommodate you. I mean, I don't know exactly what we can do, you know, for them. I mean, we'll give it our best hurrah, though.
I think it's just making them aware that this event's going to take place, you know, there'll be music, and the music will go till 11:00 PM, and if you can make an attempt to clean up around there.
We do have a cleanup day scheduled for Monday. I already have volunteers and staff that are coming in on Monday. We will walk a two-block radius and pick up anything that happens to leave our lot. I don't foresee us having any issues with that for the fact that we're going to have door people, that wristband, you won't be able to leave the fenced-in area with cups or alcohol of any kind, so I don't foresee us having an issue on that end, but we will do a cleanup day on Monday.
Dan, what's the other food truck? I see you have two of those.
The taco truck from, the taco truck from Glencoe will be up on Saturday, and they'll run until they're out, and then they're going to pack up shop and go home, so.
Sounds good.
What time does everything start on Saturday?
Saturday, everything gets rolling right away at noon. Sunday is also at noon. Friday is 8:00 PM.
Just as a, kind of a comparison to, was it the J.C. Ball Out at the Rec Center?
At the Civic Arena.
Civic Arena, several years ago.
Their decibels are a little higher.
I know that, but still, you know, they just did make an attempt to just reach out to the neighbors.
We'll gladly put out a letter to them. You know, I have no idea what type of feedback I'll get off of them. I mean, and I also don't know how far we can reach out to make them happy either. We'll do our best, which I think we've tried for the most part, you know, and we'll continue to make sure that our neighbors are very happy with what we've got going on.
Well, I think it's just, again, making them aware so they're not surprised, so.
I will give it my best effort.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep. Any other questions? Awesome. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thanks, gentlemen. We do not have a public hearing. Communications requests and petitions, review of the recent Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition activities.
Just wanted to take a little time this evening to review some recent activities on the Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition. May have remembered back, it was on late May, early June, there was a letter, well, there was a letter after the, I think there was an editorial after the article in the Leader, after the county commissioner, a couple of county commissioners and the county engineer attended the Minnesota Transportation Alliance fly-in down in Washington, DC. Their focus was basically the improvements, proposed improvements to Highway 212. Good article, good editorial in the Leader, and since then, there's actually been a fair amount of activity on the Coalition's front and specifically Carver County with respect to 212 and pursuing some federal grant opportunities. All the letters and resolutions and all that good stuff we've approved over the years to support those efforts have gone to some good use to a common cause. So with that, what I did is included the information I received at their membership meeting in mid-September within your packet. The first thing up on the screen was a letter from the Coalition President to the Met Council Chairperson explaining, you know, what they, what their desires are and specifically what their, I guess, interests are in the Met Council's transportation policy plan. I won't spend a lot on that, just more informational purposes. Specifically, it gets into some corridors within Carver County, obviously 212's included on the top of the list, but it gets into other corridors within Carver County. Some of you are probably aware of, Carver County approved a half-cent sales tax about a year or so ago, so that's really allowed Carver County to push the issue, not only with Met Council, but with specifically MinDOT, to leverage other funding sources with the proceeds that they are now taking in with their half-cent sales tax. So, you know, they're, they are generating some rather significant funds, you can imagine, and that, you know, our half-cent generates about $1.3 million, give or take, on an annual basis, so across Carver County. I think they had some projections early on on some literature, I saw $4 million or so. I think they were very, being very conservative with those projections, but that's what they're communicating, the Met Council, basically, in this letter. Hey, we would like to see these corridors identified, thus allowing them to leverage other funding sources with their local dollars they now have on hand. Then moving on, info in your packet includes some informational sheets on the Highway 212, two-lane gaps, and how they propose to address those. The first one is the Cologne to Carver segment on the east side of Cologne, obviously, and then the next sheet is on the west side of Cologne out to Norwood Young America, tying into, obviously, the four-lane between Norwood Young America and Glencoe. It's interesting when you think about it, it's in the first paragraph of the project overview, you know, from Minneapolis all the way up to, you know, Glencoe is basically 50 miles, and this is, these two five-mile gaps, give or take, are 10 miles worth of roadway within that 50 miles between Glencoe and Minneapolis that remains for four lanes. So gives you an idea of the scope of this corridor and where it takes you, you know, from basically McLeod County into the heart of the metro area. Really, what's been shown, and excuse my chicken scratch on my handouts, but, yeah, if you refer back to the first segment here, it's about $46 million between Cologne and Carver. The $12 million remaining is the red piece of the pie there, about a quarter of it, obviously, and that's, that's what remains within this grant application, and this is the front end of that application that they provided us a few weeks ago. But they're looking for a build funding grant. That's the old Tiger Grant, and it's basically a competitive grant process at the federal level. That's underway as we speak. There's been $1.5 billion allocated to that grant program for 2018. What was shared with us was they believe this application for the easterly gap segment to the east of Cologne is, is, I guess, very competitive. It's, it ranks well with what else has been submitted within the state of Minnesota. The other thing that's favorable is the state of Minnesota has, it's been a few years, couple of years, I think, since Tiger Grant's been received in Minnesota, so the terminology just recently changed with the new transportation bill. That's the difference, I guess, between Tiger and Build is just the transportation legislation on the federal level that these funding sources are generated from or basically called out within, but in essence, they're the same. They think this one has a good chance, they should be learning more by the end of the year. I won't get into the details. It gives a little bit of existing conditions, project location, proposed project, yeah, pretty simple, all in all, taking the four-lane or the two-lane, the four-lane in these two five-mile segments. The other thing is reduced conflict intersections, J-turns, and they show up at basically all of the intersections, all of the major intersections within these segments. So on the easterly side here, they're at the Kelly, which is basically the farmstead that's immediately adjacent to Highway 12, the Red Barn, I guess, that's right up against the roadway there, and then you have Melgren and then County 43 towards the east end before you get to Carver. So those would be all J-turn, R-cuts, similar to what's in Cologne that was built about a decade ago. Then likewise, here's the other application for the westerly gaps, applied for $25 million, which, if you flip back to the pie chart here, is about half of the overall estimated project cost for the west gap there. So 10 million on the county front, and they have the state on the hook for 18 million at this point in time. So it's really, these grant applications are the only outstanding monies that are looking to be arrived at. The county is dedicated 6 million for the east gaps, 10 million for the, for the westerly gaps, and then the state has made their dedications, like you've shown in the pie charts here. I think the hope here on the, on the west gap is the red piece of the pie can become smaller over time, and there's potentially more state money that comes into the mix. The $25 million is the maximum grant application amount.
Could they possibly give less than that? You know, as part of the grant, or is it all or nothing?
I'm not certain. I guess I'm not that familiar with the grant process. I imagine they could, and then have the locals seek to fill the void and deliver the project. And they're all estimated numbers also. There has to be contingencies broken, you know, accounted for regardless. Nothing's been, while the east gaps, in essence, have been final designed, they're nearing the completion of their final design effort, but the westerly gap is very, I guess, preliminary at this point from a cost standpoint. So just flipping through, yeah, and then just quickly, similar to the other diagram, on the easterly gaps, it shows the major intersections, and then they're noted with a star where the reduced conflict intersections would be, so. Out on the, out on the west side, yeah, there's been, obviously, there was an ugly accident a few weeks ago at 51, and that's the Bongard's Corner down there, and that's been a very problematic intersection for a long time. And with that, I can show you a quick drawing. I didn't include within the packet, give you an idea what else is going to be going on on 212. There's a few overlay pavement preservation type projects happening in the relatively near future. Right on the, whoop, let's do that. Right on the west end over by Norwood Young America. A little bit. Yeah, so Norwood Young America, basically from Highway 5 on the west side of town there, through town, they're going to be doing a pavement rehab project in 2020. There's also going to be a pedestrian underpass, and this is going to be quite the project, involved with a fair amount of grading, because there's not a whole lot of grade relief on either side of the roadway there. If you ever drive through Norwood Young America, or just towards the east of Dairy Queen, you'll notice there's kind of a cattle path that comes across the roadway there, so in essence, they're going to put a, put an underpass in that area to address those pedestrian movements.
Those are fatality there.
Excuse me?
Those are fatality there a few years ago, right? On that pedestrian got hit.
Yeah.
Right on that intersection.
I'm sure if that was, but there was-
Yeah, the high school kid got killed.
Yeah, I think there, yeah, I know what you're talking about, Gary, but, yeah, I know. There were some circumstances there. Then the overlay, the yellow, you get out towards Cologne where the four-lane picks up again there.
At the-
The overpass, and then they're looking at doing R-cuts just on the east side of Cologne there, at County 41 and County 36, then picking up into the four-lane, which they're hoping will be 2022. Obviously, that is driven by the funding we just talked about, that grant application for those gaps, and then the Carver County received state bonding dollars for the interchange there at 44 and 212 in Chaska there a few years back. So all those projects are coming in the near future, with the one exception, the one wild card being the four-lane conversion in 2022.
So what's the plan for through Norwood Young America?
Basically-
Funding to make it four-lane?
Through Norwood? No, it's, it's basically intersection improvements. It's a pavement, man. It's a pavement.
Right now, it is, right? Or part of that grant, that would still be that?
It's already four-lanes.
It's four-lane.
It is four-lane, yeah.
Well, there's still traffic lights, so.
Yeah, no, it would be a true four-lane. They would clean up some intersection dynamics, but, yeah, it's, in essence, four-lane today.
It's not a highway.
It's a-
It's not a highway with traffic lights and reduced speed.
No, yeah, it's a reduced speed environment, obviously. The signals aren't going away in Norwood Young America by any means.
All right.
Yeah, on either side there. With that, yeah, any questions, thoughts? Just wanted to give you an update. This is good news, obviously. There's been some headway here. Carver County is leading the cause. I think all of us in this region owe them a big thank you, you know, and, yeah, without them, I think 212 would be kind of a dead issue right now on MinDOT's front. We always, we are, we're always remembered, 212 in Carver County is within the metro district, and that's how Met Council views it, and when it scored up against other potential projects within the metro district, honestly, it doesn't score very well. You know, it's a different dynamic out here on the edge of the metro as you enter out state and, you know, how we feel it should score, but, you know, that played out in the Corridors of Commerce projects a few months back with the state money when Highway 23 and 14 received dollars, you know, after the initial award of those projects went to 94 and 494 corridor and 35W corridor, you know, and then they, they had to get more money outstate in the second round of it, and it went to 14 and 23, and the reason that they were allocated there, those are projects clearly in outstate districts, whereas 212 in Carver County is still in the metro district. So that's really, you know, what's pushed Carver County to pursue these federal dollars, the build grant funding source.
So is Congressman Emmer, is he on the Transportation Committee?
Yeah, I sent that out to you guys, yeah. He's going to be out on Thursday, 10 o'clock. They're going to start at the Carver County Public Works Building just to the west of Cologne. If you're interested, yeah, there was another email that came out later this afternoon on that front with a more agenda. I can forward that over to you, so if you're interested, by all means, feel free to attend. We are members of the Southwest Corridor Coalition. We do submit dues every year, and, yeah, I think it's very worthwhile, and they're glad to have us, City of Hutchinson, City of Glencoe, McLeod County, Ranville County, you know, Granite Falls representatives are there quite a bit, City of Montevideo, so they really appreciate the outstate support of that, of the 212 corridor as a whole, so, yeah, if you want to attend- If you wanna attend on, uh, on two, on Thursday, you'd be more than welcome.
Mayor and Council, that was, uh, obviously Highway two twelve was an item that we identified in our strategic plan of one that we wanna get behind and support, obviously to the impact, due to the impact it has on our industrial base here and simply knowing the fact that we don't have a four lane highway that goes through our town, so.
I was planning to go, just felt it's important to represent, you know, s- the cause from Hutchinson. It's also agriculture, trans- just commuting and, uh, industrial needs, so.
Yeah, and the other thing that fits into the other piece of this puzzle on the two twelve front with respect to Hutchinson is, uh, City of Glencoe, uh, McLeod County, uh, Mendat are, are just starting up, uh, they're calling a jurisdictional study, basically a planning study, and, you know, one of the major focuses of that effort is the two twel- no, excuse me, the twenty-two corridor through Glencoe. So that's just getting underway. I think they just had a kickoff meeting a few weeks ago. So, you know, obviously if, uh, two twelve four lane becomes a reality, uh, all the way out to Glencoe, you know, from Hutchinson's perspective, you know, what happens to twenty-two now and how do we, yeah, streamline through around, over, under Glencoe, I guess, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice to clean twenty-two out.
There is some activity on that front, looking at the long term with respect to twenty-two. That's it?
Thanks, Kent. Discussion of invocation schedule.
Um, Mayor and Council, you may recall back in June, we, uh, adopted a new, uh, policy regarding the invocation. Um, invitations were sent out in, in mid-August to the churches and religious institutions within the community. We identified twenty-six. Um, we received a response back from thirteen of those twenty-six, of which nine have, uh, volunteered to, to provide the, the invocation. We, um, there was actually one that came in late, uh, Friday, um, I think it was, I believe it was Marinatha. Um, and so they did give us two dates of which they'd be able to, um, provide the, the invocation. Um, part of that new policy did, didn't note that the council or they were, or didn't wanna review that to make sure that they're comfortable with a schedule that, that gets established, and so just looking at your feedback, 'cause, um, I wanna be able to communicate to the churches, this is what we have set up for a schedule, um, to get that out to them, for you guys to formally approve that at your, uh, um, next council meeting, so.
I was wondering, since there are some gaps in months, you know, if some would, where they, some have, uh, suggested or signed up for consecutive meetings within a month, but, um, maybe it'd be worth reaching out to see if they would, uh, do one meeting one month and then do it in one of those other months that would.
Kinda fill up that, the schedule for the year.
One, one a month.
Sure. I think we've got enough responses where people are really flexible on where they got put that we could probably throw something like that for, together for your consideration, so.
I guess when I looked at it, I was disappointed. You know, we're reaching out to everyone and there's a lot of gaps in here, you know, that, it, it was disappointing to me. It was, it seemed like when the Ministerial Association was leading it, we had more. And that's all I'm going to say.
Alexa, we'll have, uh, we'll have the formal, uh, schedule in front of you for consideration at your next meeting.
Alrighty. Uh, unfinished business. Uh, we have ordinance number eighteen dash seven nine zero. Ordinance amending section one fifty-four point zero zero four and section one fifty-four point zero six four. See of the city code allowing dog daycare boarding facility by conditional use permit in a C four fringe commercial district and amending the definition of dog daycare to section one fifty-four point zero zero four with favorable planning commission recommendations, second reading and adoption.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, as you recall, last meeting, we talked about amending the ordinance for the dog boarding facility. I had noted that previously we had some definitions and provisions, our ordinance to allow dog daycare. However, there's been somewhat of a, a demand for more boarding in a smaller scale. So what we've done is amended our ordinance to allow dog boarding, uh, up to twelve dogs uh, in our C four zoning district. And, uh, that will help accommodate a local business that would like to participate in this type of use. And, uh, at this point, if you don't have any questions, I'd recommend approval of this ordinance.
Well, Brian, uh, Dana? No, well, you both can come up and introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Brian Duscher, five eighteen, Highway Southern East. Dana's Darkspire.
I'm Dana Duscher.
Well, we're excited that you guys are doing this. At least I am. I think, uh, there's, there's a need for it in this community and, uh, I think it's a good thing. Also, thank you for doing it.
So we will have a conditional use permit application on the agenda for next month that Dana's has turned in for, um, starting this process. So hopefully by November, they're able to, to take, to take animals in.
Okay, any other questions for Brian or Dana?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. Thank you.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Thanks, Dan. We have ordinance number eighteen dash seven nine one. The ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Hutchinson to include a certain land owned by Hutchinson Technology Incorporated and Upanor located in the Hutchinson Township, section thirty-two, with favorable planning commission recommendations, second reading and adoptions. Dan, you're up again.
Yes, um, again, you'll recall last meeting, we talked about, uh, the petition for annexation that the city received from Hutchinson Technology and Upanor, uh, to annex the road on the east side of the properties out there. Um, so the planning commission looked at it, felt that that was in the city's best interest to annex that property into city limits, and obviously we're here this evening with the second reading of the ordinance. Uh, once it's through here, we'll be sending it down to the state Department of Administration, uh, Boundary Adjustment Unit for their consideration, uh, for consideration to be a part of the city limits.
One thing I wondered about when I looked at the overhead, you know, if, maybe this is more of a question for Kent, but is there any discussion with the other property owner about maybe some drainage improvements that could be done as part of that?
I just remember the farmhouse to the west of the hotel. Some issues in the past periodically, and you can kinda see a drainage ditch, you know, by the hotel from the road, so I didn't know if anything was.
Uh, yeah, the drainage goes that way from, uh, that, that property around the, along the west side of the hotel and then scoots to the north and then migrates to the east. Really, the issue is pretty localized in that area. It's, it's basically on the property line of that, that property and getting her, getting it around the corner from the hotel area. Yeah, um, once it gets going to the east towards that roadway, I believe it's fine. I just thinking back to when we were dealing with that five, six, seven years ago again.
Well.
Yeah.
It's probably a separate issue than the annexation itself.
Well, yeah. Be more of the road project than.
Yeah, well, it's more of a, honestly, it's a private, it's a private property issue at this point in time between the two, two private property owners. It's, yeah. Once there, once that drainage gets to this, this private roadway, uh, you know, we're gonna, we intend to reconstruct that road, the, the bit of design work we've, we've done and keep it basically looking like a, a rural section. It won't be curving guttered.
Okay.
You know, we're still gonna drain the roadway off to the edges. Uh, I believe we're gonna put in a, a flat curb just to protect the pavement edge, similar to what we did on the one side of Second Avenue years ago along the north side there. But, yeah, that'll do sheet drain and really perform like a, uh, a rural roadway with, uh, ditch sections on both sides.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Mary.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance one eight seven nine one.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad. Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Thanks, Dan. We have new business. Uh, resolution number one four nine five five. Resolution authorizing insurance of two million, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in general obligation bonds. Twenty eighteen A.
Hi, good evening, Council. Last month, uh, we were here and you basically authorized uh, city staff and ailers to begin the, the bonding process. And in the last month, uh, we compiled a lot, compiled a lot of data for ailers and we held our, our bond rating call as well with S and P. That went very well. Um, they reaffirmed our rating at double A minus. Uh, one thing that did catch their attention though was our, our increase in the tax capacity. I think I might have mentioned that at a previous meeting. Our tax capacity is, uh, looking to increase almost nine percent next year, which is really helping us to, it'll essentially lower our tax rate, uh, four or five percent if we, uh, hold our tax levy flat for the two thousand nineteen. But, uh, tonight we're here to, um, issue the bonds. Um, these will basically reimburse us for costs already incurred. Uh, I think at, at a prior meeting, we talked about that, how we traditionally, uh, reimburse ourselves with, with the bond proceeds. So, uh, obviously these bond proceeds are, uh, needed. Uh, we need to replenish our coffers. Um, so with that said, uh, Bruce Kimmel here, uh, from A- Ailers and Associates, you might remember him from three, four years ago. He, he previously, uh, presented at these meetings. Nick, I don't think wanted to be held accountable for the interest rates he promised, so. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Bruce and then I'll be handing out some information as well.
Great. Thanks, Andy, and thanks, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's nice to be back with you. Uh, I do have some results to go through with you on the two thousand eighteen A and B bonds. I'll let you get the A-bond packet first. While Andy's handing that out, I would just say, um, we finally saw a little bit of an increase in interest rates over the last couple of weeks. That's what Andy was referring to. Um, you might have seen treasury yields jump last week on the outcome of some good economic news. Who knows if that will be sustained or not? Uh, we've all just been really spoiled for about the last ten years. We keep on waiting for rates to go up, and they will, and then they come right back down again, and who knows, that might happen again by the time you do your next bond issue next year. But all in all, even, uh, with this little bit of a rate increase, by historical standards, these are still excellent results, and they fit right in with the city's debt management program. As you know, you do a great job of following your debt levy projection and, and we work very closely with Andy to make sure that your debt issuance each year fits within the, the city's, uh, desired parameters. So now that you have the information, why don't I start with the two thousand eighteen A bonds? This bond issue has been resized to two million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand. It started out about seventy-five thousand dollars higher than that. We were able to reduce the bond issue after the bids due to the winning bid, uh, offering some premium with their offer as well as not taking all of the underwriter's discount allowance. And since you knew exactly what you needed to bond for, since this is a reimbursement that worked out really well, we were able to reduce the bond size. Uh, we, we did receive five bids on your behalf this morning. The winning bid came from Northland Securities. You can, with an interest rate of three point one four percent. Uh, on the following page, you can see all five bids, I guess the next few pages, all pretty close to each other within about twenty-one, twenty-two basis points of each other. If you do look at that Northland bid though, on the first page of the bid tab, you can see the premium that I referred to. And this is really just in response to market demand, uh, investors on this short end of the curve like those higher coupons. And so those, uh, Northland wanted bonds with four percent interest rates, but you can see that the actual yields on those bonds range from two point four five to two point eight percent. So when you have a yield underneath the coupon, that's what generates that premium. So they're paying you more essentially than the bonds are worth. And we were able to take that money and reduce the bond size again by about seventy-five thousand dollars. The only, the other thing I would mention, if you flip ahead a couple of pages to the debt service schedule, um, you might have noticed this on the pre-sale discussion with Nick as well, but you can see that the debt service is somewhat front-loaded. Uh, that means that your maturities are higher in the, uh, first several years than they otherwise would be if you were looking for a level debt service. And again, this is because we're really working very tightly with your debt management program, your debt levy that becomes available each year as bonds fall off and also looking at projected assessments, uh, that would come in to help pay this debt service.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Since we're trying to fill in maybe some of those gaps now, that limits future opportunities?
Well, I'll let Andy respond to that, but I, I know from my understanding, you're, you keep on having debt levy capacity that opens up as well as bonds mature, but.
Yeah, at some point in the future, we're gonna have to take a good look at our debt management plan, um, 'cause I think it, we need to have some discussion on what we're gonna be doing in the next year or two, but here's, here's a little, uh, summary I put together today just to show you what interest rates have done since the original debt management plan was created in two thousand eight. Four point two four percent interest back then. That's what we based our original plan on, and we limited our city debt to one point five million back then. So you can see what rates did, dropping from the four point two four to two point twelve, basically, right before we updated our management plan. So with the rates dropping like that, our debt service decreased. Our tax levy, uh, we didn't need as large of a tax levy to cover that lower ta- um, debt service, so we had a gap of a hundred to two hundred thousand a year there for several years. And we filled that gap a little bit with equipment debt back in two thousand sixteen, but there's still just a little bit of that gap left that we're filling tonight with this issuance. Um, but that shouldn't have much of an impact on future years, you know? But, uh, yeah, essentially, uh, point number two down there, uh, when we did update our debt management, management plan in sixteen, uh, we did factor in some moderate rate increases, I believe a quarter percent each year. Well, we almost had three years of rate increase here in just one year. So we're either gonna have to look at, um, increasing our, our debt levy target or cutting back on our project level, but that, that's all something we can talk about when we take a serious look at this debt management plan. Yeah, and even in two thousand seventeen, that two point five five percent, that was a little higher than it should have been just 'cause we didn't have that bank qualification due to the Hutch utility issuance. We were over the ten million threshold. Um, so our rates were a little higher that year, but otherwise, that was a good stretch of low rates from two thousand and eleven to two thousand seventeen. And, and it sounds like rates are still trending up. Is that, uh, you would agree with that as well, Bruce? Next year, the Fed's planning a couple increases as well, so we're, we're most likely looking at one more year or more of higher bond rates for our street improvements.
So with like, uh, six tenths of a percent, what would that, you know, on a bond issue like we're looking at now? How much does that add to interest, which would take away from project dollars possibly?
Well, this, this was an analysis using two thousand seventeen's interest rates. Basically, another ninety thousand of, of interest over the course of fifteen years. Uh, our, uh, special assessment rate was also impacted, so, um, with the lower rate, the assessments would have been lower as well, and then our debt levy would have been about seventy-one percent, or se- I'm sorry, seventy-one thousand or so, uh, lower if we were at the two thousand seventeen rates, so. This was a very quick analysis.
That's for a total of fifteen years, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Fif- yep, yep. So this was very quick. It's not exact, but I just wanted to have it in case you wondered.
Actually.
But yeah, I, we're gonna have to take a, a, a more serious look at the debt plan 'cause I, I've just briefly updated it based on these numbers, but need to take a closer look, but yeah.
About. And that was actually something we discussed even during our strategic plan of needing to take a look at that as we can forward with the needs of the community.
So I guess with that said, we're asking, uh, council to approve the resolution in front of you tonight so we can issue these bonds and finance our street projects.
Make a motion to approve them.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve the resolution number 14955. All in favor? Aye. Both carried. Right. Uh, we have resolution number 14956. Resolution authorizing issuance of 1,625,000. General Obligation Stormwater Revenue Bond Series 2018B.
Okay. Yep, similar to the last agenda item. One differentiation here is the bonds we're issuing for the stormwater retention pond at Linden Avenue, the debt service will be repaid out of the stormwater fund operations. Where the last agenda item, it was being repaid by a, a tax levy essentially. Um, so again, uh, this issuance is, uh, paying cause for the Linden Park. We have not incurred any costs yet, so it, it's not a reimbursement mechanism like the prior agenda item. So we'll have the funds available as we start commencing work. Um, so with that said, I'll turn it over to Bruce again and he can go through the, the bid.
Okay. Thank you, Andy and, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'll just really briefly touch on a few high points here. On this bond issue, uh, one of the most noteworthy things is we were able to access state credit enhancement because this is a utility project. And so these bonds were backed both with the state's triple A rating from S and P as well as your underlying double A minus rating, which allowed you to access some really nice interest rates on this 10-year bond issue. Uh, we received four bids on your behalf. Bernardi out of Chicago was the winning bid with a true interest rate of 2.88%. If you just look at the yields really quick on the Bernardi bid, you can see, and if you compared them to the yields on the previous bond issue, the first several, uh, maturities are between 25 to 30 to 45 basis points better on this bond issue due to that state credit enhancement. So is it a huge help? No, but definitely helps the city, uh, in terms of lowering your interest rate and making those stormwater revenue, uh, stormwater revenues go farther for this bond issue. The only, only thing I would mention is we did include the city's credit rating report in the previous packet. And I really wanted to stress that in terms of the things that you can control, uh, your financial management, your fund balances, your budgetary management and so on, you really are doing very well on those fronts. Strong and very strong, uh, marks almost across the board. Uh, adequate on debt, but again, uh, the adjectives that S and P can use are limited. They only can use about four or five words. And so adequate is actually just fine. It's not a, it's not a bad thing like you, we might think here in Minnesota. Um, so really a, a very good report. Your, your team does a great job on these, uh, rating calls and nothing of concern from our perspective. So with that, I'd welcome any questions or ask you to consider the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. All in favor? Aye. Both carried.
Thank you. And then, uh, Mayor, if you don't mind, uh, Bruce will need, uh, the two, the, the bid tabulations or the proposals, uh, both copies of those signed, uh, one copy for him to leave tonight, if you don't mind.
Yep, we will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
14 is, uh, sanctions to be imposed against Sonora's for liquor license violation. Histrionic. Nope, actually, Mr. Sabora. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. This is perhaps the last portion of this matter that we've talked a couple of times over the past year, just by way of recap, uh, earlier this year. An employee of Sonora's here in town ended up pleading guilty in district court to, um, a charge of providing alcohol to a minor, and that was as part of Hutchinson Police Services compliance check that actually happened back in 2017. But anyway, with regard to, um, the consequences of that, when someone pleads guilty or is found guilty to a charge like that, it triggers potential license consequences against their liquor license. And summer, when this was talked about, the council appointed Steve and Mary to act as a subcommittee to conduct a hearing into violation. Uh, we had some communicate, communication between the subcommittee and Sonora's through their attorney, and we were able to come upon a resolution of this case for you to consider tonight whereby Sonora's would waive their right to a hearing in exchange for, or less knowing the outcome of consequences against them. And as I noted in the council packet, uh, the subcommittee recommended Sonora's accepted basically two consequences against their license. The first one was that they be prohibited from selling alcohol on a consecutive Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday before November 1st of this year, and also pay an administrative penalty of $1,250. Noted in the letter from Sonora's attorney, they've actually already complied with the four consecutive days. That was earlier this, uh, week, um, or pardon me, last week. Um, so that portion is completed. And, um, remaining thing would be paying the administrative penalty. But, uh, this is before we tonight to approve this resolution of this matter. And I certainly can attempt to answer any questions that you might have about what's being proposed.
Should note that one other thing that originally was, uh, added was, uh, employee training, but that had actually been done and, uh, there was records of that that were provided.
Right. As part of the back and forth between the subcommittee, um, Sonora's through their attorney, they were able to provide the subcommittee with documentation that they had already, uh, gone through alcohol compliance, uh, training. And they also provided, um, a copy of their employee handbook that talks about how they, um, try to identify underage, um, consumers, if you put it that way. Portions that demonstrated, I guess I would say their attempts at least to serve alcohol responsibly.
I actually was there on Wednesday, the 3rd, and asked if they weren't serving alcohol and, uh, talked along about it and, yeah, did the employee training and, uh, said that, uh, we're gonna watch it pretty closely, so.
Well, I, I also think that since they replied right away and they were in compliance now, they, they've already completed their X amount of days off with no liquor. And if they come through with the dollars, they're good to go.
Make a motion to approve the sanctions.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself, uh, pulls, uh, the sanctions against Sonora's. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both carried. Thanks, Mark. Uh, rescheduling December 25th council meeting.
Um, Mayor and Council, I know, Councilmember Chad, I brought this up at the last council meeting and it was something we were looking at, but so we can just properly prepare and in, in the case, if there's a need for a public hearing or something, um, we wanted to bring this in front of the council for your consideration tonight to reschedule that meeting. Obviously, the 25th is Christmas. By law, we cannot conduct business on, on a holiday. And so we're looking to have you reschedule that. Um, and speaking with staff, our preference would be to do it Thursday, December 27th at, uh, at 5:30, which would be our normal time, that'd be a Thursday. The alternatives would be the previous Thursday or that Wednesday right after Christmas day, but, um, so that's in front of you for consideration.
Well, my preference would be either the 27th or the 20th, not, not the day after Christmas.
I would agree.
I think for like bill purposes, the 27th, that's kinda why we identified that as, uh, and I would know, and I think that's the last day we could have formally approved budgets and everything too.
Unless if there's any planning commission.
Yeah, planning commission, I didn't make that, that's where I think it'd be better to have it on the 27th.
I'll make a motion to have it on the 27th at 5:30.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself to schedule the council meeting for December 27th at 5:30. All in favor? Aye. Both carried. Uh, we have, uh, library board minutes and we have the Liquor Hut Quarterly Report and Planning, Zoning, Building Department Quarterly Report. Andy, you have anything else for us tonight?
Nothing further, thank you.
Kent?
Quickly, uh, leaf vacuuming is underway as of today, so move the leaves out into the, uh, the gutter line and only leaves, uh, the day after your garbage service, so as, as usual.
A lot of leaves out last week already.
What's that?
A lot of leaves out last week already.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. We discourage that, but, uh, we're, we're doing some catch-up now and unfortunately, uh, what's been sitting out there for a while is a little soggy, obviously, which doesn't help our cause. But, uh, we'll get caught up and go from there. Uh, Second Avenue Bridge is open, uh, looks good down there and, uh, yeah, we are, finally have an open bridge, so, uh, other than that, uh, we'll get things closed up on that front and get our bridge bonding dollars, uh, requested from a funding standpoint and, uh, look to that, get that all buttoned up here shortly. Otherwise, project-wise, yeah, struggling a bit with the weather, but all in all, it's, it's not too bad, so, believe it or not. But, uh, on the century front and the streets up on the north end of town, uh, could be a lot worse. Uh, we've gotten things fairly well situated before we got the vast majority of this rain the last week or so, so, thanks to the contractors, uh, on those fronts. And then lastly, uh, our self-central drainage area pond bids, uh, we'll, we'll be receiving those on Thursday, so, we are getting quite a bit of interest on that project. Uh, we have a, a full plan holders list, so, yeah, I'm thinking we might see a fair number of bids on that front just due to the timing of, of that work and, um, just so council knows and how we've laid out the schedule, we've, uh, specified that the, uh, salvaging of the topsoil needs to happen before Thanksgiving, which is, uh, we anticipate will, is normally, I guess, when the frost starts seeding in the ground, probably shortly thereafter for that matter. So we want them to get the topsoil, uh, scraped off and, uh, stockpiled and we'll haul some of it down to, uh, Creekside and Hats. And then, uh, they will give the contractor basically up until Christmas to do the pond excavation work, so. That encourages them to get that work done instead of waiting till well into the winter and then really being at the whim of, uh, weather. So hopefully things cooperate for us in, in December and we can get the pond dug and then everything hopefully will be buttoned up come Labor Day next spring as far as the final restoration, grading, plantings and such. Some more of the, excuse me, not Labor Day, yeah. Might be Labor Day. Who knows?
So do they put in, in, any piping, you know, as, or this is just a whole?
There is just a, a very minimal amount of piping, yeah. Uh, we do need to get into Linden for the outlet pipe, that connection, and then a little, just into the Sunset, uh, uh, Street Boulevard. So that won't happen until next year. We're not gonna rip up a street in the, in December here and let it sit, uh, with a gravel patch a winter long. That's it.
Uh, Kent, uh, the, is the trail open between Second Avenue and Fifth Avenue? There's still a barricade up on Second Avenue.
Yeah, we'll talk to the contractor on that front, yeah.
I mean, it should be open, correct?
Yeah. It should be open. Everything's done, yeah. Yeah, so I think it's, uh, a barricade, a sign just got left out there, yeah.
I'll move it off to the sun.
There you go. Do that on your way home.
I can do that. Way home.
Take a look. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Mark, you have anything else?
Nothing else tonight.
Chad?
Just one thing, um, I was at a social event on Saturday where there was a county streets worker and he said that the city of Hutch staff is excellent to work with, so. And that was an unsolicited, um, compliment and, uh, I just thought I would pass it along.
So do we have a job opening coming up? I heard a few of them over the years. Get on board with us.
He just said the Hutch streets guys or anybody that he needs to work with, they're, they're always great to work with, so that was nice to hear, so.
Good to hear.
If you wanna pass that along to anybody that wants to hear that, that'd be great. That's all I had.
Thanks. Mary?
Um, well, we, Gary and Matt and I attended the League of Minnesota Regional Conference and they have a lot of the concerns that we have out here. They're looking at the workforce development and looking ahead at what's gonna happen in 2019. Um, one person we should say kudos to and congratulations to is our former council member, Bill Arnt. He was just inducted into the Hutchinson High School Hall of Fame, so that's really a good thing and congratulations to Bill. And that's it.
That's it? Steve?
Uh, just a question, um, as far as, uh, just an update on the Amoresco project.
Kent, do you have any?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we've been spending a fair amount of time on the, uh, LED street lighting, uh, transition with their staff, uh, between us and Hutch Utility staff and looking at our options there and, you know, it's, that's just the street lighting alone's turned into a, you know, sizable, uh, effort, I guess, exercise, you know? Looking at, can we do to standardize, you know, we, uh, tall poles versus shorter poles and we're gonna really, uh, iron that out and, you know, we're looking at identifying major collector street type intersections on our system, you know, so basically city collector street intersecting with city collector streets, similar to school and Roberts. We installed the, the two taller poles last year as a pilot test and, you know, that's been well received on our front. Uh, Utilities has, uh, received compliments with respect to that. So we're looking at, uh, you know, what should we do as far as installations with these taller type poles? And so we spent some time on that. And then really Amoresco needs to take that back and, and then start to look at, you know, what, what do the costs start to add up to, you know, uh, with respect to an energy performance contract? And do the math and, you know, the payback analysis and such. And then also just on the facilities, the overall, uh, energy audit, uh, yeah, we're gonna be meeting, I think the Labs is talking to Mr. Paulson this afternoon. We're trying to set up a meeting, the last meeting in, or last full week of October here. So that'll include a lot of their city staff with respect to, uh, you know, parks facilities, uh, you know, facility manager and, and, uh, people that operate, you know, the variety of facilities citywide to see what, uh, Amoresco has learned on those fronts.
When you mentioned the taller sl- streetlights, I mean, um, school and Roberts, it worked out really well because you didn't have trees there that might block, is that taken into consideration with different locations too?
Not really, I guess, that's quite, uh, trees will always be an issue just in our community and we struggle on that front, honestly, when it comes to whether it's lights or signage, you know, you pay attention out there, you know? It's tough to keep up with the tree trimming, not to, you know, have those, uh, have signs or lights blocked, you know, as trees grow and mature and keep, yeah, so we're gonna...
Taller ones, poles can be more of an issue too.
Yeah, no, and I think we're, right now, we're just, we're identifying intersections. Uh, an intersection like school and Roberts, you know, two taller lights, I think, is necessary to properly light that. You have other collector type street intersections that are more minor collectors on our system where only one light is really necessary in our mind. So, you know, we maybe have like 10 of those major intersections that would have two lights and then, oh, I think we maybe add another couple dozen, 20, that, uh, we would have one taller light. taller light. And then the rest would be our typical 16-foot, you know, fiberglass pole, which we're hopefully gonna be transitioning to an aluminum pole. So that's the other beauty of this potential project. We'd get rid of that 1,500 or so fiberglass poles and some of them have been out there baking in the sun for over two decades now, so that would be a drastic improvement, so. But, and then there's certain things that need to be done on the fixture front. We have four different types of fixtures out there and yeah, like I said, Amoresco, we have all these desires and thoughts to improve the overall lighting system, but it becomes much more complex than simply putting a retrofit into the globe and just transitioning to LED. I think what we ultimately want to accomplish, so. And we'll bring that back to council, you know, I've made that clear to Amoresco and staff and really touching base with you on these taller poles and the lighting standards that'll be introduced here because we, more than likely, and ultimately, if the project is delivered, we will receive some feedback.
So one thing, you know, it's another advantage with the LED though is that you can kind of tune and direct the light, so maybe that helps with some of the light pollution aspect too, right?
Yep, and we're looking at a cutoff type retrofit fixture that would go into our existing ornamental glass globes.
Thanks. And the other, Steve? Matt?
Couple of quick things. The recognition event, you should have received invitation, the invitations haven't gone out. Just a reminder to please, RSVP, that's the 25th. RSVP is due 17th or something, or next week, Wednesday maybe. And then, I know Upennor has their grand opening on Thursday and I think that was a personal invite, so I'm not sure if the entire council got it, but I know we've got the mayor from Apple Valley is coming out and some other representatives throughout the area, so that's it.
So I'm inviting everybody to come, so. Up to Upennor, they're gonna give tours and stuff, so it's a very, very interesting place now. Well, the farm kid's gonna come out in me again, so tractors and combines and gravity boxes and everything on the road, so everybody take caution when you're out traveling out in the country. And with that, with the muddy situation out there, there's mud on the roads and actually the mud is worse than ice, so be careful in your travels. That's it. In German, Sonora.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Carrie.
Have a good evening.